Recording. Mayor, I have a few preliminary matters. This is Zoe Burgess, your city clerk.
How do I do?
The workshop is being held with a quorum of City of Westlake council physically in attendance at the Westlake Council chambers 4005 Seminole Pratt Whitney Road. Mayor Roger Manning, Vice Mayor John Paul O'Connor, Councilman Patrick Paul, and Councilwoman Kara Crump are present physically in attendance. City manager Kenneth Castle, city clerk Zoe Burgess, planning and zoning director Nilsa Zacharias, and engineering director Suzanne Dombrowski are present and physically in attendance. Entrance city attorney Donald Judy is present via communications media technology. Mr. Judy, are you able to hear and speak?
Yes, ma'am, I am. Thank you. Good evening.
Thank you. Public comment may be accepted. Utilizing the electronic comment card available on the city's website, public comments are permitted at the appropriate time during the meeting. The mayor will call for such during public comment, and you may participate at that time utilizing the system's virtual hand feature and waiting to be acknowledged if you wish to comment. Please note this meeting is being recorded both voice and video, and to remember your mic may be live. I will mute any microphones that carry any feedback or interruptions. If you are a caller that has been muted, you may unmute yourself by pressing star six. Any person in the virtual meeting causing disruption or being inappropriate will be removed from the meeting. If I may also remind those physically in attendance, please utilize microphones so that the virtual audience and a clear recording of the meeting is produced. Thank you, Mayor Manning.
Thank you, Zoe. Call to order, the city council workshop meeting, August 23rd, 2021, at 6:36 PM. We'll call, please.
Councilwoman Long Robinson.
Here.
Councilwoman Crump.
Here.
Councilman Paul.
Here.
Vice Mayor O'Connor.
Present.
Mayor Manning.
Present.
We have a quorum.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. As we can move along with our agenda, let's start out with a discussion of the proposed code language art in public places program. And remember, who's the thinking about this?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, on the record, Nilsa Zacharias, planning and zoning director for the City of Westlake. Well, let me tell you, I'm thrilled to be making this presentation tonight because I believe that a local government that embraces art and appreciates art will receive numerous benefits well beyond of the direct reward of having a beautiful city. And so, with that, let me, one second, the next slide. When we talk about art in public places, we don't only refer to the standing sculptures that we can see around Palm Beach County in several developments. Those are standalone sculptures. And then, we are also referring to art when it's integrated into a building such as the iconic Bacardi Building in Miami, you can see there on this slide. Also, we can refer when the building itself becomes a sculpture such as the triangle building that was designed as a five-star hotel. So, art means many different things, so these are just one of the examples. This presentation will focus why is important a city art program, also will show examples of other municipal art programs, and in the most important part, the proposed language for our art program, and final remarks. Well, as I mentioned before, to have an art program which will assist the city to establish the city's identity and character as a place where public art is appreciated. The second goal is to promote beauty and interest of spaces that are visible in the public and private development projects. So, if we have a private developer or if we have a city hall, we are embracing art for private and public projects. Also, it's important because support for public arts, depending how we do it, it could be a serious engine to trigger economic development. And as we have seen many examples, and we go through, cities that have embraced art, they attract key developers, they attract Class A buildings, office buildings, and they also, as you've seen, art festivals, art shows, they attract visitors that eat in the local restaurants and shop in our local businesses. So, there are many different ways that this program can assist our city. Also, please, let's not forget that back in 2018, when this council approved the comprehensive plan, part of the vision, and I copy pasted this, is the city will be a vibrant, desirable, and welcoming place to live, work, and play. So, those are keywords that we continue putting our heart on. And part of the guiding principles, just build a city of character and identity. I mean, this council has had the vision to establish this guiding principle. The city will promote economic development and provide for attractive public spaces. That was from day one, we had that principle. And then, also, this is another guiding principle, grow a vibrant economy. So, part of growing a vibrant economy is to attract the key developments that will sustain our economic growth, our sustainable growth. Let's talk now about different municipal public art programs throughout here in Florida. West Palm Beach, West Palm Beach has a robust art program, it started in 1985, and has been improved. They have an art master plan adopted in 2015, they have reviewed that, and also they enacted another program in 2020. They have fees that apply to both residential and non-residential projects and are based on 1% of construction cost. Coral Gables, this city has a very successful art program. And throughout the city, you can see different sculptures. The program also was originated in 1985, and they also was part of their 2010 master plan program, and it has been simplified through the years, and they have a mandatory fee for private and government projects. So, basically, private developers and public projects, they do, they comply with this art in public places program. Lakeland, Lakeland is a, is a small community that has embraced art. They have an annual artist culture competition, they have funding fees for 1% for municipal projects up to $100,000. In this specific case, Lakeland, they do not, they do not ask to developers, it's not mandatory to comply with this art in public places, is encouraged to donate. So, where the money comes from is basically from the CIP, the city puts money for art, Lakeland. So, Palm Beach Gardens, I think we all know Palm Beach Gardens, and we have been through those PGA Commons and have seen different type of arts, and they do have a program, it's a very successful program. Mr. Kieran Iskey, he's very, very familiar with the program. It's a, basically, the program has provision of art or fee or a payment, a fee payment in view of art. So, the developer can choose to put their own art or to provide money toward a fund for the city, and then the city is in charge of buying and installing the art. So, and the fee is equal 1% of the vertical construction cost and applies only to non-residential Naples, another well-known community, very high-end, they embrace art, it's a provision of art or fee payment in view of art, there is a fee. In their case, they do it per square feet, not based on construction cost, and we'll go more into details. So, and applies to non-residential projects. Coral Spring also has art fees per square foot, and there are multiple funding, donation, grant, city budget, you know, so. Boca Raton, Delray Beach, and Wellington, this city, they do not charge any fees, they do not have an art in public places program where they ask the developer, you know, to comply with that. Basically, where's the money coming from their art comes from the CIP, so their own budget, the city puts money toward art. So, this limited implementation, limited public art. And in front of you, part of your package, you have the proposed code language. What I did is I basically put a specific slide summarizing the most important parts. Section one is the purpose. What is the purpose of this proposed art code? Art code is the funding acquisition placement and maintenance of artwork within the City of Westlake, and is to enhance the economic development of this new community, establish the city's identity as a place where public art thrive, and promote the beauty and interest of spaces. The next slide is this. Who is, basically, what kind of project will be eligible? Applicability. This ordinance shall apply to public construction projects and private construction projects, so the public and private. So, A, non-residential developments. This ordinance is proposing all non-residential development projects with vertical construction cost above $1 million. Obviously, if we have a very small project, then, you know, if they want to donate, obviously that would be great, but for a project that is above $1 million, it would be a requirement. So, shall be subject to the requirements of this art program. B, residential development at extent. Residential projects are not required to pay a fee or provide artwork in view of the fee. However, the city always is encouraging developers to donate, so that is part of the language. What happened with mixed-use project, where we have residential and we have non-residential projects? Because I am thinking we will have those type of projects. So, we thought about it, and we included language specifically that says that the the non-residential part of the project will have to contribute toward the program. However, the residential part, they don't have to. For example, the PGA Commons, all what you see there, that's a mixed-use project. You see the restaurant, you see the office space, but there's also residential there. So, the non-residential sections have contributed toward the arts, you know. So, and then also temporary structure and extent. We already spoke about this, there will be developers that they might not want to engage into, you know, purchasing the art, installing the art, that they would like to contribute toward this fund. So, this proposed case is contemplating that. Is the city where the art acquisition fund is established, it will be funded through the art in public places fee for public and private construction projects, cash grants, voluntary donations. So, it's, we as a city, we need to consider, you know, different possibilities. We are hoping that most developers will like to install the art themselves, that's what we are hoping for, and that the reason we put this specific language. So, non-residential development project with vertical construction cost of $1 million or more must contribute 1% of the vertical construction cost. But, if, so that is toward the funding. However, if they want to install themselves, we incentivize that so they only have to contribute 75% rather than 1%. We are trying very hard for the developers to take upon themselves to go through the process, buy the art, install the art, and then, so we are giving them an incentive in that instance.
Nilsa, can I just, because I do appreciate that you're spending a little time on this. And thank you for comparing, you know, cities, Palm Beach Gardens does have a very robust, a good art in public places program. Is your art acquisition fund pretty much your public art fee? That's where we're charging those public art fees, correct? Okay, I understand you correctly.
One second please. So, the acquisition fund.
Is this another word for your public art fee, right?
Yes, yes, it is the art in public places. You can contribute to the fund or you can put it yourself.
Okay. And just a quick question, I know you, you mentioned a couple other cities outside of Palm Beach County. West Palm has a pretty old payment, right? Just if I'm honest. I think the two top municipalities that I would have liked to have seen is Boynton, they have an extremely robust one, because they also have a breakdown of 1% of construction, 70% goes into art, they have a very good program, and as you say, Palm Beach Gardens. So, I know that this is a workshop now, but I would like to see maybe, and again, I know you have a very good relationship with Laura, maybe come, you know, while working with her, to look at Boynton's art in public places program, but you can go ahead.
For each of those municipalities, we have called, we have talked with the planners that manage the program, we ran their calls, so we have done extensive research in Boynton, we will do the same. Well, we have, we have this language in our call, how do we enforce this? That was another, we've been working on this language for some months by now, quite a while. So, one way to enforce this, and that was actually suggested, is being even reviewed by our legal counsel. So, when a project is approved, and that could be a condition of approval, so, and that's what we are putting here in enforcement, the requirements of the art in public places program shall be listed as a condition of approval in the development order. So, and obviously, court enforcement is in charge of, responsible for enforcing the development order and condition of approval that has been, you know, approved by the city council. So, that's, that's the way we, we finally proposing, we contemplated other alternatives how to enforce, but we are also looking at Florida statutes, and that we want to be 100% in compliance with Florida statutes, so this is, this is meeting that requirement. Part of this program is proposing to have an art in public places advisory board. This is very important. All those municipalities that they have that program as a requirement for developers, they do have this board. So, and we are proposing five board members and two alternate, and one non-voting high school student that could be appointed by the city council.
I do have something to say about this. For your requirement where it has an advisory board, I think the requirements are a little strict. So, to say someone needs to have an educational degree related to the art, possess competence of evaluation of art, I think that is a little, I don't know if I would want us to have an educational degree, because you could have an eye for art. You have Perro Padio who makes pieces for Beyonce, and he just did murals for West Palm Beach as well as Riviera Beach and Boynton, and he's on the Today Show and everything, and he does not have a degree. So, I think maybe that language to have in there, having an educational degree is a big one.
The language said no less than four board members. Are you making maybe no more than two board members or not at all?
I don't know. I, I mean.
This is a workshop, so.
Yeah, it's a workshop, and that's just how I feel to say, I just, I don't know. You know, you want people to serve, right? You want people to, and they're volunteering their time, this is not a paid board. You have elected officials who don't have a degree. So, I, I don't, I don't know. That's just me, I don't know how you all feel about this.
Perhaps we could substitute degree for experience.
Yeah, yeah.
Four years' experience in art.
And I guess also what we're looking forward to next year, want at least four of them to have that experience, or three of them to have the experience, and the other two just have an eye. That's kind of what we're looking for, some input, you know, what, what kind of mix are you looking for?
At the end of the day, you've got people who create art, and you have people who appreciate art, and you have people who can do both. So, I mean, maybe we need to make a majority of them have experience in creating art, and the minority in appreciating it, or however you guys want to point that out. As far as the advisory board, I think that's a must, 100%. And whether we want to call it a art in public places advisory board, or a cultural committee, whatever, but it's, it's important that we get committed involved in this.
I have this, yeah, I don't think that maybe it needs to be a degree, but knowledge of and being in it for experience is really very important, but really.
We can exchange the wording for knowledge and experience.
Experience, but then we gotta, we gotta put a number by experience, about years of experience.
Four years, five years.
You know, put a resume in, and so, we can look at.
I would say minimum four years.
Yeah.
The old adage, those you can't do.
Definitely, the people who volunteer for this, their resume will be internal counsel, and you will, you know, you will select the final candidate.
So, the potential mixes, at least three of those have to have at least four years' experience, the other two may have something less than that, gives you some flexibility in the plan.
I mean, I, yeah.
Okay. We'll look at, we'll look at wordsmith and that.
No, in that regard, I don't, it's whatever, but I think that's a great suggestion.
Thank you. No worries. So, basically, the way it will work is that the artwork will be reviewed and recommendation from this, this board, they will be a recommending body, they will recommend to the council, which is the artwork. So, and then, obviously, staff will be involved, because we will be also putting a staff report together and recommending that to the board, and then the board, you know, will recommend to the council. We all have to make sure that if the applicant is proposing like a standalone sculpture, that it's not interfering with the view when you turn around with the car, that the place is actually, you know, landscaped and everything. So, we will do our technical review, and the board will decide on the art itself.
Important if you go through this, the, there could be maintenance issues with art a lot of times. Maybe they shouldn't be able to.
Any zoning issue at the time, you know? I didn't see it, but is there a requirement that the board member has to live within the city?
We put there that, no, what we put is shall leave or work on the facility. Yeah, number, there, number two. Also, we are proposing criteria for the review of the artwork. You know, obviously, there should be a resume from the artist, you know, specifics, experience, all of that from the, with regard to the artist, not the board members. Also, the, the board members, they can create, and obviously, staff will help with that, guidelines, to assist both the public and private sector to implement art planning activities. That's, we put that language there, if the board would like to create guidelines, that language is there. So, city staff shall review the application and make recommendations to the board, you know, and obviously, at the end of work, will make the recommendation to the city. And we have also put together the standards for the artwork, you know, display, integration, lighting, all of those important criteria for an artwork. It needs to be, ideally, it needs to be visible when you are driving around or you are walking on the sidewalk, you know, it's art in public places, so that's what will contribute at the end to the beauty of the city, the fact that it's visually accessible. So, and also, we are looking at integration, like you were saying before at the beginning, if the art can be integrated like a mosaic in one of the facades, like for example, the Bacardi Building that we talked before, you know, it could be integrated into the building itself, and the lighting, lighting is also important. In winter, like I said, it's dark, so.
When it comes to the maintenance, the city should be responsible, unless I'm mistaken, city really does not have any, do we have any workforces in place that at this time could do that, or would that have to be?
Subbed out.
The maintenance would be contracted out, and that maintenance would only be required if it's on a city-owned property or in relationship to a city-owned building, so it would be part of the maintenance of that structures for the city as well.
And the cost, but I mean, this thing comes from the overall budget going out.
Yes, but it's very important to understand that our whole intent is that the developer installs the art in its own site, which means the developer is in charge of maintenance. However, if the city installs the art, as Kent just mentioned, and obviously, and it's installed in the public place, in the city-owned place, then, yes, the city is in charge of the maintenance.
Mayor, may I ask a question regarding that point? What would be the council's position regarding the replacement of artwork? Say it's destroyed or lost in a tropical event or defaced, is the developer going to be required to replace it?
My thinking on that is if it was destroyed by a hurricane or similar. Insurance should be insured, should be insured, and they would be responsible for maintaining it, which means that the insurance would have to pick it up, or they would have to pick it up. I'm not sure what the insurance would like for any business development, and if that then would be part of it, would it then be necessary, required that they be ensuring the art? I'm not, I don't know if that's automatically included in whatever.
I can do further research, I can contact the city planner at Palm Beach Gardens and see, they have been through a lot of hurricanes, and see how exactly. They have been through a lot of hurricanes and see how exactly they deal with that situation. That's a great question.
That's a good question.
Obviously, it has to be in compliance with the building codes, you know, so all of that. And then I just include there the definition of vertical construction cost. We are looking at right now two, two different definitions. One is to base it on total construction cost or base it on vertical construction cost. Some municipality, Palm Beach Gardens, based on vertical construction cost. And we, the city has a lot of experience with Palm Beach Gardens. Don't you want to mention something about it? So, and other municipalities, based on, on total construction cost. So we are looking at two angles and we are also working, engaging our building official, Mr. Joe Verko, so what will be more, you know, suitable for our municipality? From these are the two definitions. Just in final remarks, I mean, embracing art opens the door for so many possibilities, such as, for example, to host annual arts culture festivals, as we just seen in another municipality that attract many visitors in buying fine art and craft shows. Also, we can strengthen our partnership with the art program of the artist school. It just will bring many additional benefits to, to our city.
The acquisition fund, are there any plans of budgeting something outside whatever donations or whatever? Or is this all coming from fees and donations?
As of now, it's planned to be fees and donations. We'll see how the plan goes and how it works out with the residents, the desire of the council. If it, if a proper municipal council wants to incentivize as, as likely, then there'll be, you know, potentially funds from the direction of the council, including funds in the budget process.
I'm just asking, much like fireworks, I'm not against it, but I want it to run lively as far as, you know, spending money.
I totally understand. That's why it's the direction of the council as to how much you want to back it or not back it. If you want it purely donations, that's fine, purely funded, that's fine. As time goes on, we'll see how, how it flushes out and have a change in our, our thinking.
I think that until we can stand on our own two feet as a city, we shouldn't even think of.
I would not.
Taking money out of our budget here. As much as I would love art in public places, so it should be solely fees slash donations. But in the future, you know.
Well, I'd say down the road, with the council, with the, with the cash flow, with what we have going on, it may very well be applicable to do some funding in addition to what fees will be.
I'm also thinking of the high school, if they have some kind of project that they could put together and we as a city could then support and that's kind of the thought in the back of my head.
Well, first thing is to get the program in place. We won't be able to get anything going without getting things started unless we put it into play. So, Nelson, will you be getting back to us and how, how will you be getting back to us? I don't think we have, I don't know that we already have done a workshop on this, but certainly there were some questions that we're gonna follow.
Yes, we are going to do the research and we are going to obviously amend our proposed language. And then we are trying to have, might not happen in September, I think more like in October, maybe in LPA and start reading. So we can definitely report, you know, in, in between now and the start reading.
In the meantime, we'll get revised language out for you all so you can read through it again so that we're ready for questions. You can ask questions, Nelson, so that we're prepared by the time we get to the LPA that we've answered those questions and we're on track with everything. If we need to have a second workshop on it, we can, it's not a problem.
Real quick, tell me again, Palm Beach Gardens is 1% of the vertical construction cost?
Yes.
1%.
And it's the 0.75, the 0.75?
No, they don't, they don't have that.
We are suggesting for the city, what the 0.75, to give an incentive for the developer to install the art.
So this, I mean, this is incredibly important now that we're in our growth phase, but gardens, for instance, they don't have much room to go vertical, but what do they do?
Oh, they do, they have.
Really?
Oh, yes.
Yeah, for example, the, the gardens project was just approved like two weeks ago and that's about another 50 million in construction and the PGA Station, south of where FPL was going on. We've got another 200,000 square foot. So a lot, a lot of big stuff in the gardens.
Excellent.
Most municipalities in Palm Beach County, I serve many municipalities and even the ones that looks like they are built out, they are experiencing a strong redevelopment. Developers are buying to be activated, building, demolishing, breaking large lots, building luxury condominiums. So most, most Palm Beach counties experiencing stronger.
The land, land is getting scarce, so vertical is where everything is going, where experience person was going to adjust it. Nelson, thank you very much for the presentation. It's very nice, very good. And I'll take that one, other comments?
I truly appreciate Council, Katrina Robinson, because I remember when she mentioned it at the beginning of the year and said, that's such a great idea.
It brings revenue to your city, so that's why I'm excited for you to come back so we can see the revenue that it brings to your art.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Catherine Ross, attorney with Louis Long and Water, here on behalf of the municipal CBLH. So first, as always, we appreciate the opportunity to work with your wonderful staff on developing these ordinances and providing input. We always appreciate that opportunity. We're really excited about this one. The one comment that we wanted to offer, I think, is actually right in line with what Nelson said, which is about providing a place that has identity and character. And to that, we just kind of want to suggest that we continue to work with your staff to maybe expand the definition of art so that if there is some unique architecture that comes in that will lend that texture and identity, then that can count towards the Art in Public Places because art, as Nelson put it out on her first line, the iconic buildings that feed forward that really serve that functions, we'd like for that to be a consideration. A couple other nitpicks that we'll just talk through with your staff and hopefully have some refined language for you if you're kind of next to reading. But again, just generally appreciate this opportunity, so thank you.
Thank you.
Much done.
Very good.
Thank you, thank you, Council, for your comments and input. We wrestle with sometimes, we get so wrapped in the middle of it, we need to step back and freshen our eyes on it, give us a different perspective. We appreciate that.
In order to 2021-06, Chapter 8 of Parking Regulations, Land Development, Land Development Regulations.
All right, good evening.
This is all yours.
Good morning. Yes, good evening, Mayor, Council, Suzanne Zombrowski with Chen Moore and Associates, City Engineer. And here with me today, I also have Tu Ha with Via Planning and she is our city traffic expert that supports us in these traffic reviews and code compliance. Thank you. So the outline of this presentation is going to go through the purpose of the parking chapter, our history to date with our current parking chapter, how we connect to the goals, the intent of the comprehensive plan, tying to previous ordinances that the city has adopted with the golf cart ordinance, how the city can support electric vehicles and low-speed electric vehicles, the benefits of providing charging stations and parking for those vehicles, and then a summary of the changes that we are proposing for this chapter. So the purpose of the parking chapter is to ensure that adequate parking is provided for all different uses within the city. But we also want to encourage a land development regulations to support multiple modes of transportation. Parking, most people think of your regular standard vehicle and that's it, but we do need to consider all these different parking or, sorry, mobility modes with its pedestrian, bicycles, transit and all of that. So the history of the parking chapter, the current chapter was adopted by city council on February 10th, 2020. And then our discussion today is for proposed amendments to this chapter. And I'll go through all of them with you, but the main changes are related to the electric vehicles. So how to disconnect to our comprehensive plan? The objective of the transportation element, 1.7, is to promote energy efficiency and greenhouse gas reduction strategies. So the use of these electric vehicles and low-speed electric vehicles meets this objective. And the golf cart ordinance, 2020-11, was adopted by the city council on October 12th, 2020. And within this ordinance, we provided a map and it showed where these golf carts were allowed and where they were prohibited. And that was based on the speed of the roadway. So you'll see here, for example, Seminole Pratt Whitney Road, you are not allowed to have a golf cart in the traveling on Seminole Pratt Whitney Road. You are allowed to have a Townston apartment. But the shared-use paths were designed in such a way that they could have golf carts on them. The requirement for that is by state statute and that is eight foot wide. And so intentionally, the city has designed all of these roads with that eight-foot shared-use path. And the golf cart ordinance also had some definitions in there. So just pointing these out, we don't need to go through all of them. Within the Chapter 8, we did explain how some of these parking changes apply to golf carts and the low-speed electric vehicles. So how can the city support electric vehicles and low-speed electric vehicles? And that's through land development regulations that require and/or encourage the use of these charging stations and parking for the vehicles. So the benefits of providing electric vehicles and low-speed electric vehicle charging stations and parking, it shows your city's commitment to just environmental sustainability within Florida. It pays away for other forms of clean transportation that might follow as they are forwarding in city. It increases property values and it provides a potential revenue source for others that are coming to the city to utilize these amenities. The available parking for these low-speed electric vehicles, it also gives the active adult community here in the city with an affordable method of transportation that's also environmentally friendly. So going into a summary of the revisions that we are proposing for Chapter 8, electric vehicle charging stations are allowed in all multifamily and non-residential areas. We have some major clarifications on the sides for both the low-speed electric vehicle and motorcycle parking. So you'll see here a blow-up of the table where we're, for the low-speed electric vehicle parking, we are putting a maximum. It has kind of a lot both of those values here to regulate parking, how people actually maneuver their vehicle. So we have the width of the parking space is a minimum of six, a maximum of seven. The depth of the space, the length of it, minimum of 12, maximum of 13. And then the aisle width is a minimum of 15, maximum of 17.
One question. To go ahead to the council, you do have a redlined version of the changes on this chapter also.
Thank you. In Table 8.3, we added a note that allows spots that are in the drive-through queue to be, you can make a designated parking spot for them. So you hear, here's an example of a parking for drive-through service only. So in the parking chapter, we have requirements for how long a drive-through queue lane needs to be. And part of that is counting before the menu board, before the window and after the window. So this is intended for some of those spots that are after the window. If you're still waiting, you can pull into a designated spot. So Article 8.9, Section 1E and S were the meat of the changes, let's say. So this is where we're introducing all the parking requirements. So a minimum number of electric vehicle charging parking spaces for non-residential development is one space or 2% of the total required spaces, whichever is greater. So this is a requirement, this is not encouragement, this is a required. The parking space must have a Level 2 or higher charger and that relates to the speed at which that charging can occur. All parking areas are allowed to be developed with the electrical infrastructure, even if the chargers are not installed. So for some reason, they are not installing the chargers at this time, they are allowed to install the conduits, everything so that in the future that they can easily retrofit those spaces. And the electric vehicle parking, parking space will count towards the total parking requirements. So this is not going, this is not in addition to your parking requirements. It's instead of. So the electrical vehicle parking spaces shall be painted green. Here's an example of what that might look like. And we do, like I said, we have definitions in the golf cart ordinance, but we also have clarified that in this chapter on how it applies to the golf carts as well. Golf cart parking may occupy 30% of the parking at a recreational area within residential development. And as I'm sure you've seen, some of these recreational site plans coming through that is very applicable to this area, so we want to make sure we account for that. And the low-speed electric vehicle parking may occupy 10% of parking at non-residential development. So that's your maximum.
That's encouraged or that's required?
This is a maximum.
Okay.
So you may not do more than 10% at a non-residential. We do have a minimum as well on the previous slide, but this is your maximum.
The minimum was for electric and low-speed electric vehicle or strictly for electric?
I'm trying to go back.
It read to me like it was just for electric.
Okay, okay. Okay. So that's electric vehicles and low-speed electric.
So what's the, what else for both? Is it either or?
It's the, yeah, again, it's a, we got a lot of definitions in here and I think we need to do a little bit of work to make sure that's clear. But the low-speed electric vehicles is for the golf carts and that type of thing.
No, I understand. I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to understand. I mean, the way this, this reads is it's one space or 2%, whichever is greater is the minimum for electric vehicles, but I don't see a minimum for golf carts.
So, yeah, we should, we can clarify that, but the golf cart, you're right, it has to be a maximum and not the minimum. Because it may occupy.
The golf cart, those parking spots, they're designated for either electric vehicles or golf carts?
This here is just an example of striping you see for an electric vehicle spot. So a golf cart spot would be striped differently, but it would still be designated as golf cart.
It would be smaller, absolutely.
It'd be smaller and you have different charging stations, so you can't charge a golf cart with the most regular electric vehicle charger. So we are proposing that the low-speed electric vehicle parking be designed so that the permanent features still meet the requirements of a standard vehicle parking lot. So our intention with this is that you're installing concrete curbing, the landscape medians, the asphalt. If you want to somehow redo your configuration of your parking lot, those are the items that are hard to change. Striping on a parking lot is not that hard to change. So the example I'm giving here, if you have, you know, 36-foot-wide parking aisle and then you've got nine-foot-wide stall, you can get four standard spaces. But if you want to turn that into the low-speed electric vehicle, you could get six equivalent spaces there. So that just will give flexibility, you know, for market conditions and as things change. So getting into motorcycle parking, for non-residential uses with 50 parking spaces or less, one motor, one motorcycle spot is allowed. For non-residential uses with over 50 parking spaces, a maximum of three motorcycle spots are allowed. So again, this is allowed, not required.
Of course, that would be designated spots.
Designated motorcycle spots, yes, and there'll be, the dimensions of those are smaller, probably too. So in conclusion, the city has supported the use of these electric vehicles and low-speed electric vehicles by providing this network of pathways, both on the roadways and on these shared-use paths. And so additional parking regulations for these vehicles will allow greater flexibility in use for the city.
Can you tell me again, the Level 2 charger is required where?
The Level 2 charger is required and that's. The level two charger is required, and that's, I don't have the definitions offhand, but a level one charger, I believe, it was about eight hours of charge or a full night of charge time.
Yeah, so a level one, hi, I'm still on one, I'm the traffic engineer. So a level one charger will be something that you and I would probably put in our garage, and it would typically take about 24 hours for a full charge. A level two charge is what we typically see outside of like the Whole Foods or, you know, Ikea, things like that. While you're shopping or having dinner, you can then get it charged for, you know, 20, 30%. And typically, for something like that, it would, I forgot the number, some electric I didn't know fortunately, but it probably can get you home easily, you know, you can, if you do a few of those charges, then you don't have to pay for a full level three charge, which takes, I think, less than two hours for a full charge. So for something like that, and you're going to be somewhere for four to six hours with a full charge.
So there's level three are the ones that you see at like the Tesla charger.
The Tesla, yeah.
The supercharger, yeah. And typically for those, you have to kind of be a membership to all that stuff. Yeah, so the idea is that it provides some benefit, but it's not at a membership level.
Any other questions? I'm just anxious to see what that minimum is for the golf carts, the LSEV.
So we can, we can work on that with the advocate, yeah.
And the reality, my, my guess is that because of the uniqueness of the size, chances are they would do a couple, you know, just knowing, again, I don't think that they're going to have golf cart charging or golf cart parking everywhere. Let's say if you have a restaurant adjacent to a, a country club, and there's a really good chance they're going to have a few of the parking spaces, but they're not absolutely everywhere, so we might not require it. If they just happen to have a little bit of a space left over for a motorcycle parking or a golf cart parking, and say, all right, if, if it works for you, and you know for a fact that some of your patrons moved in back from here in their golf cart, then we'll have why.
Well, I mean, I disagree entirely. Our, our city's only six and a half store miles long, and every single person who lives in the city, for the most part, is a, is a golf cart person, and the city was built as a golf cart-friendly city, and we're past this golf cart ordinance. I think we should make it a requirement as a minimum, whether it's 1% or something along those lines. And I think it's imperative that we make it a requirement, you know, even if it's just one spot.
Well, I would think that that largely would depend on the kind of business.
Correct.
That's, that's, that's going to be here. And I don't know, can I remind me again, golf carts get from this side to the other side of Seminole Pratt? How on Town Center Parkway?
Technically, they should be using the crosswalks. That's how they should legally be going across, yeah.
Any place that you can park a car, actually, besides perhaps a car wash, I think should have a golf cart accessible.
So these are, so all the developments are golf cart accessible. We do, in the land development, when you have a pathway, a shared-use path tying into the shopping center or to the residential development, we work with the engineers on how that transition happens, so that you are going from the pathway into the development safely and not crossing over, you know, the larger roads, larger amounts of traffic. So if, for example, like a public's parking lot, obviously, you're coming off the pathway and into the parking lot itself. You're allowed to be in the parking lot at that time.
And I would love to see some golf cart spots, I suppose.
Yeah.
Because I would use them, so.
One other question, if the, we, there weren't enough golf cart parking spaces at some, someplace, some store or whatever, and you parked your golf cart in a regular parking space. Is that then going to be, somebody going to get a ticket for that or not?
So that's allowed.
That's exactly what's going to happen, you're going to end up, because a golf cart will take up a full spot.
Right.
Whereas you could have had, you know, yeah, those three, you know, three spots could be five golf carts.
Do you, so you have any, any experience as far as the interaction between cars, pickup trucks, and golf carts is concerned? I mentioned that when publics came about and parking golf carts in there, safety is, is something that, I read my mind wrong, in your experience or your knowledge, are there incidents, are there many incidents, or are there none? You know, I picture a pickup truck, and around here, every one of these pickup trucks is lifted and got a lot of tires and whatnot. Backing up, it's very easy to overload a golf cart. So, you know, my, my vision, my view is that golf carts, yes, but only in certain ways. I mean, I, I just cannot see where, where it's extremely safe for golf carts to park for every parking lot
in the villages, for instance.
And be overloaded by somebody.
I don't know, I think, I think, I think one of the things that staff has looked at is the fact that regardless of whether it's golf cart parking on one side of the aisle, vehicles on the other, the drive aisle is wide enough as if it's cars and cars. So the space is also deep enough that if the person backs up and backs into the other space that far to hit a golf cart, they shouldn't be driving, because they would have hit two other cars behind them. So the, the, the length of the parking space, the width of the drive aisle that we have requirements allows for that extra. So if somebody does decide to strike on the other side of the aisle, instead of vehicles, standard size, put a bunch of golf cart spaces, they're shorter, you pack them in, but there should be ample room for the person with the big truck or whatever to back out and still get out of that having a problem.
The fact of the matter is, the golf cart ordinance already exists. Right. Golf carts are already allowed to be everywhere. It's not like we're going to forbid golf carts from going in public plaza. They're already allowed as our law space right now. What we're trying to do now is accommodate them once they get there, so they don't take up all the spots. Golf carts are here to sit.
To your point also, we give the operator of the space the option that they can re-strike for golf carts, and it would not count against them in your total parking that was required to have 50 spaces. They have 50 spaces plus one or two golf carts, whatever a requirement is. If they want to say, gee, I want 20 of my 50 spaces plus the two whatever are required to be golf cart, they can re-strike them. Does not adversely impact their parking requirements.
Yeah, I mean, don't get me wrong, I love the fact that there's a max. That's great, but there should also be a minimum, even if it's 2%, 3%, whatever council decides.
One of the things that usually ordinances, if you look at the parking code, most of the time, there is a specific number, which is the minimum requirement. That, you know, if you want to 50, one 300, you know, that's, those are minimum requirements. And this proposed ordinance, my understanding was that if a business has 100, the requirement is 100 parking spaces, 10% of those must be golf carts.
I love that.
That's, I think.
Is that in the ordinance?
No, it's not. Specifically, it's not, but that's what I think, you know, from those 100 spaces that it requires per code, 10% must be golf carts.
Love that. I mean, even if you want to make it 5%, we only get two overzealous.
80%.
And they can re-strike later if they want.
Yeah, you have to make it, be able to re-strike, obviously. I think what we're, what we're going to see is that in the commercial area, especially as the downtown is developed, you're going to see in restaurant areas and stuff like that, what residents are, getting their golf carts are going down to either pick up food or go down to the restaurant, have dinner, and you're going to see a lot more golf cart activity as, as the commercial downtown area develops.
It's already happening right here in this plaza, you know what these golf carts are doing now? Up on the grassy area in between actual parking lots, you know, like the curb, in the grassy area, or in between trees and whatnot? That's where people are putting these golf carts. It's just not safe.
For example, the Grove Market that is doing their parking and it's coming in front of council now in September, they have proposed, you know, a number of golf parking, because they are, that shopping center is close to our residential. So they have already, even before we have a code, they are already in compliance, working to be in compliance with this proposed language.
That's 10%. I love that.
We're looking, we're looking at that, but I have one question. So I'm like, did we provide in here, I don't remember seeing it, for like third-party vendors, in other words, that it may not be the operator of the establishment, may not be doing the charging, they may contract with the FPL guys or XYZ or whatever it is. Did we reference that in here somewhere? I don't remember seeing.
No, we can't.
We probably would like to reference that in, that, you know, they can do it themselves or have a third party in there.
It could be a moneymaker, too, in like ATM machines, you know, for instance.
Because, you know, the, the cost of the, of the level two is such that really somebody like the FPL group or one of those groups that is putting them out all over the place would be more likely to do a contract with somebody saying, hey, you got the conduit in, I'll come in, I'll drop my machine in and go with our situation.
And, and just so that I understand correctly, nobody's talking about LSEV chargers, right?
No, not golf cart chargers, we're talking about electric vehicles.
Totally, because they have a uniform adapter, and you could have one, nine different brands of golf carts, all different chargers.
Right.
At least not now, golf carts.
But the golf carts are just for charging.
Just parking.
Parking for golf carts, charging for electric vehicles.
Could the city get any golf revenue fund from these chargers?
Well, it would be, have to look at it, potentially up to get with DJR, potentially on the franchise of the chargers within the city and/or we do get a, a fee on utilities. We'll have to look and see if we can pull up.
Is there any way the city could get involved in this and, and for infrastructure? And then somehow make it a revenue stream, also along with the city?
Well, I'll look with, I'll get with both sets of attorneys and see what may or may not be able to be done.
I don't, I, I, I think that there's a potential in that. There's, if private enterprise can make money off of it, why can't, why can't the city have a revenue stream from it? That's, that's something to look at.
I wanted to quickly answer your question, Commissioner Paul. Fortunately, I have not seen a lot of crashes relating to the vehicle, and especially the S, you, the vehicle and, and golf cart. So I, I think partly because of the nature of the speed, they use a parking lot, so fortunately, I admit any, but we definitely going to look into.
And everything is just always my, my vision there.
There are studies, the Florida statute is what establishes the speed of when you're allowed to use a golf cart or not, and the study went into developing that speed. So we can provide more information if you'd like on that, kind of what went into that statute. That's understood.
Thank you.
All right, well, thank you, Paul, for your feedback, and we'll work on these changes before LPA and first reading.
Thanks. Okay, we'll move along with, I can see on the agenda here, it's ordinance 2021-01, chapter seven, mobility regulations, land development regulations.
Thank you. I think I can introduce myself again. But again, to all of the planning, had a very large part of development of this chapter. So our outline, we're going to go through the purpose of this chapter, the definitions, applicability, traffic studies, the standards for project build-outs, site-related improvements, mobility fee, show you what the role of Palm Beach County would be, and go through some examples. So the purpose of the mobility chapter is to present the city's mobility standards, provide procedures for analyzing the traffic for each development application. So when we were going through the comprehensive plan and doing workshops, we gave a lot of engineering definitions to the council, but it's been a long time, so I'm going to go through just a few of them, because you're going to see this terminology a lot throughout the chapter. So starting with peak hour, this is a graph here, and it's showing the traffic volume collected for each hour for a whole day. And this is for a north-south road, so you'll see a line that is northbound and a line that is southbound. So with this terminology, the peak hour for that roadway is that highest peak of those that northbound and southbound added together. So both directions add the hour of the largest traffic volume. Now, if you hear a peak hour directional, that means only one of those directions, that largest traffic volume. Level of service, and this is defined in the highway capacity manual, this is one of our references that we use for traffic engineering. It's just a measure of the performance of the quality of that road. So here are some examples, and this is from SDOT. You'll see a roadway, you know, the first image, you see barely any traffic on there, barely any delay. That would be a level of service of an A or B. The second image, you're going to see more cars on the road, that goes to a C or D, and then with, you know, a lot of congestion, you're getting into the E and S category. So there are a lot of numbers on this. I just wanted to kind of take you through what we look at from a planning perspective before the road is built, and then from an operational perspective, if we're looking at level of service after that road is in place. So from a planning perspective, we look at roadways, level of service, there are a few factors that go into it. The first is a class of the road, so a class one is rated at 40 miles an hour, posted speed limit. Class two is 35 miles an hour or less, posted speed limit. And then we look at the number of lanes, if the road is divided or not with a median. And then it'd be, this is peak hour directional volumes. So this is what we're going to study on a planning phase when these applications come in before they're built. Now, from an operational standpoint, if you want to look at the level of service after the roadway is already in place, for a roadway, you're going to be looking at the actual speed of the vehicles compared to what we call the free-flow speed. If there were no other cars on the road, what speed would you be going as a responsible driver? For a signal intersection, we look at the level of service by the delay that the vehicles are experiencing. And this is a graphic of the level of service for some state and county roads around the city. You'll see that Seminole Pratt Whitney is a level of service C. State Road 80, as you go west, is a level of service B, but then as you go east, it becomes a D. So the level of service was established in the comprehensive plan, and our policy was a level of service D. So I want to kind of talk about that for a little bit. D is not a bad grade here. So if, and this was something we discussed with the city at that time. If we wanted to be a level of service B, you know, Seminole Pratt Whitney would be probably eight lanes divided highway, Town Center Parkway might be six lanes, and that did not meet the goal of the city overall. I mean, we wanted to encourage other modes of transportation as well. Also, we have to look at it from the perspective of that peak hour graph. You still, in these city roads, you might get some delay at that peak hour time, but, you know, non-peak hour, you might not have anything. So it's hard to design to that peak hour at all times. You can't have the best level of service at that peak hour, or you're going to be investing a lot of money in your infrastructure and not really getting the benefits of the development around you. So the next definition is a link, and this is a term that we use in these traffic models and calculations. This here is an example of an output from a traffic model, so you might have one roadway, but we want to analyze it in lengths or segments, because you might have one link depending on those traffic volumes that could fail, and then the next link could pass. So that roadway, we're not going to look at it as a whole, we're going to look at it based on those different lengths and segments. But TPS stands for Traffic Performance Standards, and this is in Palm Beach County's code, article 12. Palm Beach County FDOT approvals required for all these county roads, and TPS goes through an analysis process outlined in that county code. So first, it starts with if a traffic study is required, it looks at the radius of influence of a project. Obviously, something like Disney World compared to, you know, a smaller daycare, the radius of impact of that project is a lot different. Then it takes you through the process for two different tests, one at build-out and one at the five-year mark. And then says if mitigation is required or not. So article 7.2 discusses the applicability of this. So it applies to all development orders or land development within the city, all city roads and intersections. But there is some language here about exemptions and existing development orders. So the exemptions are city-initiated changes to future land use and zoning or city-sponsored events. So if we want to have a So if we want to have a Fourth of July gathering, we do not have to go through a traffic studying process. What, for the existing development orders, this is for development orders that were issued prior to incorporation of the city. And this language says that they are deemed consistent with the chapter. And that's based on our review of the approved development order compared to this chapter, as well as the MINTO review on that. So the development order is issued prior to incorporation of the city is MINTO, in this case. So to be very clear, there are certain requirements for the MINTO, and there are certain requirements if you're not MINTO. And as I get through the examples, I'm going to show you which, how you would deal with each one. So if it is a previously proved development order with MINTO, a traffic statement is required according to these, this methodology. So the traffic credits have to be used, calculated using the same information that was approved in that development order traffic study. So if that development order says five houses are going to give you this many trips, if they're coming through with five houses, it has to be the same number of trips. So that calculation methodology is going to be the same. The net peak, sorry, PM, peak hour trips generated by the development need to be less than or equivalent to the approved traffic statement. So I'll show you in a little bit that we've got a traffic statement for the whole entire MINTO development, and there is a total at the bottom. So every time they come in, they have to be under that total. They also have to submit a cumulative tracking of the daily AM and PM peak hour trips. So if we are getting an application from 7-Eleven, and you've already got a Publix across the street and all the other items, you have to include all of that. You can't just show me 7-Eleven, you have to show me everything else that's been approved in the city. And then we look at the project driveways that give you ingress and egress. We want to look at the turning movements, see when certain turn lanes are warranted, if you need some stop signs or traffic signals too. So this is a table from the MINTO development order, the original one. And it goes through the different types of land uses, the trips based on total, the PM, the AM, and at the bottom, you've got that total. So this is what we consult every time that we get a statement from the applicant to make sure that it meets this approved traffic study. We also look at the conditions of that development order. So there are various conditions that were traffic-related, either about building roadways, standing roadways, prop share payments. And so each traffic statement submitted has this chart of all the conditions, and it checks off if they've been done or if they are triggered from the development that's coming forward. Article 7.3 gives requirements for the traffic studies. The traffic studies are not required if you have a project with fewer than 20 peak hour trips. If you are submitting a traffic study, it needs to address the county TPS requirements, if the project has divested traffic or not, meaning if it's been approved by a previous development order or not, the applicable standards, which here is a level of service D and a radius of influence, the peak hour traffic AM and PM, any seasonal factors, the peak hour turning movements, and then the total traffic at build-out. Article 7 discusses the project build-out standards. Again, it's a level of service D on city roads and intersections. For intersections, we use that Highway Capacity Manual methodology. And then for links, we have a table here. So we look at the class one versus class two, again, that's a speed. Class one is over 40 miles an hour posted, class two is 35 miles per hour or under posted speed limits. We look at the number of lanes and the peak hour directional volumes to determine if it's a level of service D or not. Article 7.5 goes into the site-related improvements. And this gives the city the ability to require some of these improvements based on the review of the traffic study. So if, you know, the traffic, the turning volumes warrant a stop sign, a signal around about, then this is how we are able to request that. Article 7.6, I want to give a little correction from this slide. So we did make a change within 18 months of adoption of this ordinance. So the language that you have in the proposed chapter is correct, but the slide says one year. So within 18 months of adoption of this ordinance, the city shall undertake a mobility fee study. And the mobility, the purpose of the mobility fee study is to consider if a mobility fee should be established, and if, if it is established, what that fee should be to make sure that the level of service is maintained. Now, and the mobility fee, it covers more than just roadways. This goes into parking, the shared use path, the sidewalks, public transit, bus stops one day. So it covers you with all of those different mobility items. The role of Palm Beach County. So if the development is vested, which the MINTO development order is, the county will be notified, but approval from them is not required. So they got their approval from the county based on their full development order, and they are not required to go back for approval. However, we continuously work with the county, they need to implement or update their traffic models, you know, based on the development in the city as well. So we notify them so that they can continue to do those updates, but we don't have to get approval. If it's not a vested development, if the peak hour trips are greater than 100, then the approval from the county is required. If the peak hour trips are less than 100, then the county again will be notified, but they, the county approval is not required. So the city will review if those county TPS standards, will review if those are met if you have less than 100 trips. But the county will review if those TPS standards are met if you have greater than 100 trips and you are not vested. And this is, I've got language here for the mobility chapter, just explaining that the city engineer reviews the information if it complies with the, this chapter and the county-wide TPS. And then from the Palm Beach County, Article 12, on all projects more than 100 peak hour trips, the county engineer has the sole authority for reviewing those traffic impacts. So getting into some examples of reviews, starting out with something small, so a utility substation. You might get two trips a day on your peak hour, very small. So what is our process for this review that relates to traffic? So our first question, is it less than 20 trips? The answer is yes, and a traffic study is not required, no mitigations are required. That's the extent of our traffic review. If this was under the MINTO development order, the county TPS approval is not required. If it was not under MINTO development order, county TPS is still not required, less than 100 trips. Next example is something a little larger, a pharmacy, 149 PM trips. Again, starting with our test, is it more than 20 trips, then a traffic study is required. We look at the radius of influence, and then we use that information to follow the county TPS procedure for the build-out test one and build-out test two. So for this example, we'll say that both of those paths, no mitigations are required. So if this was under the MINTO development order, county TPS approval is not required because it's 149 trips. If it's not under the MINTO development order, then county TPS approval is required, greater than 100 peak hour trips. All right, getting into a larger development, mixed-use residential office, retail, 1,650 PM trips. Obviously, over 20 trips, a traffic study is required. The radius of influence was established at four miles. So again, we go through that test one and test two that are outlined in the county's TPS procedure. And in this example, the link analysis fails for test one. If that happens, then the applicant is required to conduct additional analysis, looking beyond that one link and going out and out until you get to the larger roads in the intersections. Same thing with the five-year, if that fails, then you have to expand your study and go out, look at those impacts at the roads that are further away. And at this point, mitigations may be required for those roadways, for those intersections, or they would have to change what their proposed development trips were generating. So if this was under the MINTO development order, then the county TPS approval is still not required, even though this is large, it's still under that overall traffic volume that was already approved. If it's not under the MINTO development order, then the TPS from the county is required. So with that, I'd be happy to take any questions.
Oh, you have any questions?
I have a parking question, and I promise it's not about golf carts. How many trips? Say, just real quick, maybe you'll say, we answer, I'm sure. Say we get like a bye-bye baby, and they want to designate a expecting mother spot, or Home Depot wants a pro-loading spot. Is there a vehicle in our code that allows us to do that for them?
We call that designated, designated parking spaces. And we do have language there in the code right now for designated parking spaces.
Wonderful, thank you.
And to start out, we started thinking about that when we thought about boats that might be going to come into the store. So you know how, when you go to Target, you can pull up and then, you know, do a little app thing, and then it comes off, and then the car just came out, and that's how we started. We said, okay, so in addition to that, there's a few other uses as well. So we said, okay, you can designate it, and what we typically recommend for a developer is to start with a small amount, you don't want to take up a whole bunch of spaces. And if you feel that those start taking up, then you want to take that one.
But there is a vehicle in our code that allows us to do that without them having to find the variances.
They are allowed to do it, yeah.
Yes. Thank you, guys.
We've got to come back and read your Chris calls, so, you know, there was some issues with carrying a truck in and out or something wasn't around there.
It was, that was part of the fire lane in the back.
Fire lane, yeah.
But one of the things that staff is trying to do is to make it flexible for the businesses as demographics change. Because with the last year, there are more curbside deliveries, et cetera. There's more Grubhub pickups, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. I don't think that that's going to go back to where it was pre-2020. I think a lot of those things are here. That's one thing that staff has been looking at, saying, what is the potential new of how, how the parking spaces are utilized? Give the business the flexibility to operate their business as efficient as possible without getting in their way.
Mobility's changed a lot.
The specific section which we got to, that is already existing in the code, says, "Assign parking," page 22 of the document that is front of you. It says, "Parking spaces assigned for specific use may be authorized by the city manager or his characteristic need, provided the number of spaces, spaces assigned to a particular use does not exceed 5% of the number of spaces required for such use." Period. "恣意 spaces shall be clearly identified by signage." Period. "恣意 spaces and required signage shall be indicated on the approved site plan associated with the affected use." Period. "恣意 parking shall not be considered in shared parking calculations." So when site plan comes in front of councils for non-presidential, if the developer is seeking to assign for a specific use, then it should be clearly noted on the site plan, and there should be a sign there, signage.
Yeah, sure. But that's not necessarily close to that. Is there any progress on, for seven, anyone for you?
The litigation, the only thing I can report is the litigation continues to move forward slowly. That's all I have at this point.
Tara Louie, Mrs. Longman Walker, on behalf of MINTO PBLH LLC. As Mr. Castle has alluded to, you are aware of the litigation that both MINTO and Seminole District are parties in seeking the right to connect, which Indian Trail District is objected to. We were required by the courts prior to Palm Beach County going back into an emergency status to file a case management plan that had us projected for trial at the end of the year. We don't think that's likely, and frankly, I believe this case is fairly legal, so it may result, resolve itself prior to hearing, we don't know. But it's very important to MINTO to protect the rights of the city, our development rights, the city's rights to connect, and frankly, the regions, because it will only help the residents of the Indian Trail be able to more readily reach the services that are going to be provided here that everyone who's seen that they're here are going to be desperate to do. So we are prosecuting that as quickly and as vigorously as possible, and we will continue to see you with updates when we have them. But right now, it's just in the back-and-forth litigation stage where we have yet to hit resolution or go to trial.
It's just something that's becoming viral with all that traffic on school hours and Seminole Prep.
I will just, I will just say also, just as an update, because we have two connections that are shown under comprehensive plan, which was based on our original development order. The Town Center Parkway, as you know, also connects up by the school to connect to 60th Street. We have worked tirelessly with county for the last year and a half, and in July, we executed and the county approved and signed the 60th Street Agreement, which provides for us to dedicate right-of-way for the construction of 60th along the northern boundary, which then will connect to Town Center Parkway. That will be completed, that dedication will be completed pursuant to that agreement upon the county putting the construction of that road on their, their road plan, which they haven't done. And I'll let you know as soon as that happens, because we'll be, have the product to give them the rest of it, to finish up their conveyance pursuant to that agreement. But I thought that's relevant, too.
I still have that five-year plan.
So you can talk to them, put them on that.
Is that all, is that all the TPAs doing?
Yeah.
The dedication plan authority for the county?
It's actually county engineer, it's the county department. And frankly, we don't need, the city doesn't actually need them to complete 60th along the northern boundary. We just really need it past schools connecting to Town Center Parkway. So that, that's hopefully what we can achieve at both those points. And the access there exists, so it's a little less of a contentious item, though I'm sure it will be contentious for the Indian Trail. It is a connection, and they're not anxious to have one, so.
Thank you. Anything further on the disordinants? Any questions?
One comment, Mr. Mayor. We're planning on bringing this in the first meeting in September for OPA first reading, and then at the budget hearing on the 23rd or 27th of September, for the second reading on the mobility, which once mobility is done, our LPAs, our LDRs are completed, at which point we will be sitting in our mouth for certification, which all of, all of staff is extremely happy with getting it done.
I don't think, I didn't get somebody to stop you here. Thank you. Okay, that leaves us with the City Council conference. I'm going to start with the Councilwoman, Long Robinson.
No problem.
Councilwoman, yeah?
No.
Councilwoman, that was fun. Councilwoman, Charles Paul, Vice Mayor.
I'm going to go off-topic quick, only because we never get to really see each other, but it was just an idea that I had, and the council will agree. But in terms of our building development, I've been getting, maybe not from our major, major applicants, but from a lot of them, lower applicants, pool builders and fence builders. I've been getting reports that, that we do something phenomenal that other cities don't do, and there's some things that we should possibly improve on. I would, I don't know if it's possible, but I would love, maybe it's a workshop or whatever, but I would love to, you know, pick the five top, you know, the ones you get the most applications from, have them come in and along with our building department. At the very least, they tell us we're doing a wonderful job, and there's no room to approve. We get to give ourselves a pat on the back, but otherwise, maybe they can help us improve our policies and procedures to kind of streamline things. But I'd love to do it directly from that.
If they want to send me what their, what their key points or issues are, send them to me, and I'll get them investigated, figure out what it is. I know one, several that I've looked into recently, the contractor didn't provide the information they needed to provide. They provided an incomplete application, or they didn't provide the documents that they needed to provide, and they were saying it's in the building department, when in fact, it was sitting in them, we were waiting for the information.
For the record, I'm not talking about any specific.
No, I understand, I understand, but what I'm saying in general.
We have, we have to improve somewhere.
I'm all, I'm all. I'm all, I'm all for that, if I can figure out a way to streamline it. Maybe that, there may be some ways internally that we can handle, say, pool applications differently than the general applications or some of the other stuff. But yeah, I'm, I'm going to look at it and see what we can figure out better, better way to do it.
Send out a questionnaire, send out a little survey to it.
We can develop a survey.
You know, something along those. In terms of permitting.
Well, we're pretty much done electronic at this point, isn't it?
No, we're still semi-managed because we've had some issues with the electronic. We're having to change the upgrade to the newer version, so we're in that transition right now.
How much longer do you think that's, what do you anticipate, the timing in that?
Probably 90 to 120 days.
Because the playing field gets leveled when it gets electronic. Because if you don't have the knowledge to put it in and get it done properly, then it's all on you. And if you're doing it via dial or voice, it just makes it more difficult.
They have added another permit clerk and another building inspector.
So 90 to 120 days you have that problem.
Five questions, are they?
Yeah, we'll develop, we'll survey real quick.
I just want to commend Councilwoman Wong Robinson on her for putting together and pushing this art, public places together and pushing it through with her, her help. And other than that, I don't have anything else. Do we have any comments from the city attorney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. I appreciate the courtesy, allowing me to attend virtually. Thought listening to your comments tonight was very helpful. We'll work with your excellent staff to bring you ordinances which will take into account your concerns and your issues you identified tonight. Otherwise, thank you very much.
Thank you. City manager, nothing else to add? I have just one other thing before we have public comment. It's not, well, Mr. Harry, it was nice to see you here this evening, but you didn't, you weren't speaking at all.
I always, good evening, I'm Rick, I always have the opportunity to work, love to speak. And I would just try and be brief, your staff did a great job with all of the ordinances. We have been working with them for quite some time. And I really appreciate, you know, the art public places is really an interesting ordinance. You can see it just visually, the city of Palm Beach turns how it can really transform a city. And I think your staff and your city manager have been very careful to put together ordinances workable. It's not burdensome to your, you know, to the developers, but yet really will help build and create something special for the city. So really excited to see that, but particularly the infancy of your city for that to go forward. And then Suzanne Nebraska did a fantastic job, I mean, with us laypeople could totally understand what you're saying in your traffic. You know that that's pretty good. So those are my comments for the night and we look forward to seeing you at your September regular meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Harry. It's always a pleasure.
Thank you, sir.
So this conjunction will hold up for public comments.
Mayor, I received no public comment cards prior to the meeting. However, I'll give the virtual audience a moment to raise their virtual hand or mute their device stating their name and address. If you're a caller that has been muted, you may press star six to speak. Please state your name and address.
Hi, Zoe Alicia.
Your address?
5847 Whipper Will Circle.
Thank you.
Um, I have four questions. I'll just kind of, I guess, list them off. The first is the fun stuff. I, I agree with the art in public places ordinance, that's really exciting. And I did show up a little bit late, so I just am curious if you guys decided who's going to propose the board or be running it? And how many members would be on the board? This is something I've received a lot of interest about.
But I'll respond to that. Right now it's proposed at five members, two alternatives and a student from high school.
And so the high school student is in addition to the seven, the five and the two?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. Um, so the woman who presented, yes, wonderfully about the traffic flow with the A, B, C, D, E, F. I'm just curious about the timing of the lights along Seminole Pratt Whitney. And particularly, there's a bad light turning as you're headed south, you're turning east onto Town Center Parkway north. And I know Vice Mayor O'Connor has worked on this a lot, but I'm wondering, there's that left turn light that's really stuck. If there's work or studies being done on that, you know, to make it even better.
There's not blinking yellow light.
I've been in touch with the, David Ricks with the county. They're working on that timing. Also, we're looking at what it would cost to have it converted to a flashing yellow. In other words, as long as the southbound is green, it would go from a green lead light to a flashing yellow so that you could make a left-hand turn if it was safe to do so. We're working with that with the county to see what that cost, the conversion would be and when they could do it. But their, their traffic people are looking at it and I have not received the information back yet.
Excellent, perfect, thank you. Um, the other thing was, as far as charging goes for electric vehicles, is there a fee to charge at one of these spots? As opposed to say at home, you know, above, a fee above and beyond just the cost?
Curious.
I haven't, I haven't dealt with this before, let Don hear it.
For the record, Don, we see all different times. So most of what the commercial property owners go through a service like ChargePoint. And ChargePoint often provides like the first two hours free and then they charge after that, or the first hour free and they charge after that. There are some property owners that put in the level two chargers that don't charge at all, just as an amenity. But it's, but it, but it varies. The, the infrastructure is quite costly, so, you know, the more common is to provide some amount of free time and then charge for the balance.
Okay, and who, who ultimately makes that decision as far as the fee goes? Is that the, the city council?
I have, yeah, I, I think it's the property owner. We haven't seen that type of regulation anywhere throughout the state at this point. Again, it's the, it's, it's a cost for the electrical power. I think you're going to see a variety, some are going to charge and some are not.
Okay, thank you. Um, my last question was for Attorney Dewey, as far as the 60th Street extension goes, or maybe city council, city manager Castle, you can answer this. But um, my understanding from what Attorney Dewey was saying is that the 60th Street extension is still not within the five-year plan, but the county understands that it is important for us as a city to get this extension up to Golden Grove. Is that right?
I'll let, I'll let Mr. Dewey answer that.
Um, it, it's an important road. They wanted it very badly to be dedicated to them sooner rather than later, which Minto obliged by. And so I would expect them to put it on their, their, them soon. However, they have a lot of other pressing demands, Northlake being one of them. So I can't promise you anything about that and I don't have any promises from the county on when they're going to want to make that extension.
Okay, thanks. Great, thank you, everybody, good night.
If you wish to make a comment, please raise your virtual hand or unmute your device by pressing star six and state your name and address. Mayor, I see no additional comments.
Thank you. Okay, with that, thank everyone for doing the presentation, presentations tonight and for all the information. And we will adjourn at 8:14. Thank you.